Call the order of the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks Tuesday, April 9, 2019 is now five o'clock. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn in quorum. Number one, consider change order number four, wastewater interconnect project. Mr. Inland.
Thanks to be missed by the president. Yeah, change order, I guess, number four for the interconnect project. Some of these items have kind of been out there for a while, but just trying to, I guess, get everything cleaned up for the project so we can get it finalized out. Just had about seven different items there. The, you know, the biggest of the seven items was the exhaust fan that we had over the top of the wet well for $43,792. Items one and two, the tower, the radio, all the miscellaneous components of that, that basically had to do with, so the city would have, or our lift station would have communication with the lift station on the Grand Forks side of the river. Don't know exactly what happened there. The mechanical engineer on those two items, they had the tower, they were showing on their drawings the tower and that stuff to be supplied by the owner, which was incorrect, so we had to kind of make that change on the fly to make sure the contractors supplied that. And then also like the radio, the antenna, the cables, that type of stuff, they were showing that to be kind of a future addition, which wasn't necessarily correct either because we needed to have communication kind of from day one. So, you know, those two items, I guess, let's say, kind of got overlooked. You know, they should, had they been included in the project like they should have, I mean, you know, it was a change, but it, like I said, it should have been included originally anyway. Item number three, the city purchased a wastewater sampling unit, so inside our control building, we ended up just adding one additional electrical receptacle for the wastewater sampler. The topsoil borrow within the golf course, a lot of that, we were kind of anticipating to be bored, however, we ended up open cutting quite a bit more of that due to the gas lines that came through there and just what the gas company required us to do. We had to give, we had to expose everything before we could even bore near it. So, ended up with a lot more excavation, which required in the long run to import some topsoil there, just to make sure we got good topsoil and got turf established again. I think the exhaust fan, we've kind of touched on before. The rock check, this is where the pipe comes into the, into the 22 acre equalization basin. What we did there is, once we got everything seeded, when we got some rain, we were getting a little bit of erosion still that was basically washing into the pipe and ultimately ends up in the lift station. So, kind of at the entrance of the pipe there, we just put in a, you know, basically a rock check there, just to filter any debris and stuff from getting into the lift station. And then the last one, we ended up adding about 45 more feet of sanitary sewer there to tie it into the discharge manhole of the lift station. Kind of a, my mechanical engineer too had a note on the plans that he had to install about 15 feet of sewer to the manhole, and in fact, it turned out to be about 60 feet, so we had to add about 45 feet to the contract there, so. So, all in all with everything, change order number four is in the amount of $63,317.29. And then I did kind of just give you somewhat of a summary of the change orders, one through three, which were proposal one, which were on this side of the river. We had a change order number one on proposal two, which was on the Grand Forks side of the river. So those, with those change orders and the 5% contingency, we still have kind of, we had a remaining balance of about $12,783 that I guess we just, we won't use. So, it's a good thing. And, you know, basically, you know, the change orders will just, you know, they're part of the PFA loan grant dollars, so all, you know, that's all we'll be paid for.
Are those two different item things though?
What's that?
PFA loan and grant, there's two different, which one is this coming from then?
Well.
Against?
Basically, we got a $5.3 million grant, so once we've used up all of those funds, then any remaining dollars would come out of the loan, basically.
What we have right now then, these would fall underneath the 5.3 though, wouldn't it?
Well, all the money, probably in the last year or so plus, we've been requesting the grant dollars, and I think we still have, well, $1.2 million in grant dollars that we can request, but we still have the decommissioning project that's part of that, so. So, because we originally had about a $5.5 million loan and then like 5.3 in grant, and, you know, we're still not even, we haven't requested the full loan amount either, because once the grant came in, we started requesting those monies, so we used up all of the grant money before we went back into the loan dollars, so.
Last meeting, you approved to extend that PFA loan?
Right.
Which had $949,000 left, $949.
Is that what it was? Thank you.
Yes, so almost a million dollars left in the loan.
Of monies that we haven't requested.
Does, Dale?
Kind of new at this, but change orders has been a thorn in my side for years in East Grand Forks, all the change orders get done because it costs the city a lot of money. Are these things that, I don't know how that works as far as the money is concerned, but was the money already in there to do all these change orders, or why did we not have these all approved before they were done? I'm assuming it's done yet, right?
It's done, yeah, they're all done.
So, why did we not come in front of the council to get this all approved on these change orders, or we just do them and then send the bill after the fact?
Well, we, I mean, we do in times where, I mean, we have the time to get them approved, you know, ahead of time. I mean, kind of like the exhaust fan, I mean, we did bring that forward before we proceeded. But some of those things, I mean, just during construction, they happen, I mean, you can't stop the project to necessarily wait for approval. You know, we do have a contingency fund too, so.
I think Mr. Murphy can answer that.
I can answer some of that, and part of it depends on the amount as well. If the, if the change order or the request for a change is under a set amount, that could be authorized by staff. If it's over a certain amount, it has to go before the council, which is what the, which is what we did with this particular thing. Yeah, change orders are, change orders.
And then can you explain on these deals here, what the 5% markup is, all these?
Yeah, basically, I mean, anytime you, you know, you have a project, you got your general contractor and you got your subs, and if it's a change order to the sub, for all of the paperwork, project management that the general contractor does, he gets like an allowable markup on top of the contractor's, on top of the subcontractor's price. So that's what some of those additional fees are, where you see those markups and stuff. And sometimes you got, you got the general contractor, you got the subcontractor, and then you got a sub of the subcontractor, so, I mean, they all, fortune or unfortunate, I mean, they all kind of get a little piece of the pie.
So each one of these seven deals, did they actually have something to do with those things, or does it just because they get a piece of the pie, they automatically get a 5%?
Well, as per contract, they get a percentage.
That's what I don't like about change orders.
Well, I agree.
Anybody else have anything?
When the total of change orders falls inside the contingency, that's a good project.
It's a good project, I mean.
Because that's the whole of the contingency is the unforeseen things.
Right.
That's why it's there.
Right.
Anybody else have anything? See none, sir? Thank you. Move on to number two, update on regional market capture committee. Mr. Gordy.
A couple of weeks ago, Barry Wilford from the chamber came over and met with the mayor and myself and David regarding an effort that the chamber is spearheading, dealing with the retailing situation in the greater Grand Forks area. We've seen part of it with the, what happened at ShopCo and what happened at the Dollar General store, but to address that, what we're looking at is what information do we need and how can we use it to be able to help our stores, in particular on this side of the river? I mean, there are things that that can be done that will make, make it easier for our stores and to help us fill spaces. We have a couple of empty stores right now that we have to deal with. We have a couple of parcels that are potential retail parcels that this will help us find non-local users if we should do, in addition to any possible local users that would do it. But more than anything else, what the information will allow us to do is we'll help our local retailers to see what products start to become detailed, which is sold online, so they can shift and start to address those markets. And we'll also, the geo fencing part, which addresses where people are coming from and where they're spending their dollars, spending their time, that will help us be able to address if there are shortcomings, if there are certain markets that are not being addressed right now, so that we can work with our retailers, so they can do some advertising to, excuse me, to find ways to address and attract dollars from those retailers as well. And the EDA has approved these expenditures, they're looking for $10,000 spread over two years. There is money within the budget that will do that, and I have already started to economize in other areas to make sure that we don't even come close to the budget limits that were approved by the city council. So, what we're doing is we're informing you, because this is a project that affects the city as a whole, and we think it's important that the city council is well aware of this.
Mayor and Mr. Wilford, want to add anything?
I have one thought, maybe you have some, another great outcome of that meeting that we shared is, there are changes in the use of a retail space, and if we don't know what those changes are, I mean, if an actual, what was once a retail store really should retool and become something a little bit different, if you don't know that, if you don't know these greater trends, you'll keep putting retail in and it will last a few years and then it'll be gone again. But if you look forward and understand these trends, what you put in there is likely to meet that just developing need that hasn't even fully emerged yet.
And the whole issue is bricks and clicks is the shorthand way of looking to it. What stores work best with bricks? What stores work best online with clicks? How do they work together? You were seeing stores like, places like Amazon buy, I think it was Whole Foods that they bought, to have a physical presence. Wayfair is now doing physical presence. Other stores are finding ways to increase their, their online presence. So it's going to be a whole interesting coming years as retail changes and adapts to what's going on in the future. And this information will help our retailers be able to accommodate that better, I believe.
You can bet Hugo's, is already tuned into this, this whole process, they're such a good retailer.
Well, look at how Walmart is having, doing the groceries and then bringing them out so you can pick them up. I'm sure we're going to see that at other grocery stores as well.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Gordy, the mayor, Barry? Has anyone got anything, sir? Mr. Demers?
Thank you. Who's going to have access to the data then, once it's?
All the partners will have access. So to be the, Paul, really other than the actual list of which stores match, because we keep that proprietary, so we don't give our information to other competing communities, all the other data will end up, anything that's not proprietary, where it would give us competitive disadvantage, if Fargo had it, as an example.
Right.
Will be available to the general public, developers, people who want to use it, existing businesses, existing restaurants.
I'm looking, you know, one of the, the things they talked about, you know, the leakage, geo fencing, one of them was entertainment uses. I guess that one's interesting to me, thinking about, you know, primary sectors and secondary sectors, we almost need to think about retail as a secondary sector, sometimes to maybe entertainment or those type of things. And that's why I was wondering, like, who's going to have access to this as we think about what draws people to the city? You know, our economy will self-generate or circulate, you know, but what we're also trying to do is add outside revenue, and entertainment is one way we can do that. And then thinking about how that, how that would get implemented, I think would involve a lot of public infrastructure, public, potentially some public infrastructure, public spending, and how do we, how are we able to relate that back to the public that, yeah, adding additional arena will, may be something that will, you know, drive retail without losing that proprietary edge to other communities, or, you know, that kind of stuff is.
A paved parking lot, stuff like that.
Well, we look at.
Yeah, you'd be able to use that data, you know, and again, you could even geo fence different facilities within the community, you'd have that ability to do that as well. But I think to your, your entertainment question, East Grand Forks is 15 years ahead of most communities. If you take a look at the movie theater that we have, that generates, you know, 400,000-plus ticket sales a year, that, that is the envy of many, many communities this size. We really have it going on when it comes to entertainment in that facility, it's bringing a lot of traffic there, that mall is completely full, the restaurants all around it are really doing well, that whole district's really thriving well, because there is that entertainment hub there. And then if you put Cabela's there and some of the other real traffic generators, East Grand Forks is really doing quite well compared to a lot of other markets.
We have entertainment.
And we want to maintain that, but we also want to improve on that.
But I guess, same thing, like, is Reed going to, I lump recreation with entertainment, I mean, is Reed going to be able to go out and see, this is what people are searching on the internet for, this is, you know, who's coming to our community, those type of things? You know, what are they looking to do? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything at this time? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Gordy.
Thank you.
Number three, consider proposal, proposed special use vehicle ordinance. Mr. Gulf, stand.
Well, essentially, this body asked to provide a special use ordinance that would deal with ATVs, UTVs, and included in some of those special use vehicles are mini cars, golf carts. Since there wasn't a consensus on what type of a vehicle you wanted to eliminate, I have included in this proposal all special use vehicles. And then this body can look through it, make a determination if you wanted to eliminate it to just UTVs or all of the above. The other, the other thing that was in there was the permitting process, at this point in time, to be able to permit a special use vehicle, it comes back to this body, it could also be designated as the chief of police or the city administrator or some other individual to go ahead and approve it if everything else comes in on the application. However, some of our permits come through and have the city council make the ultimate decision, some of them are administratively provided through court administration, so I've left that open for this body to determine. So based upon that, any comments, questions, concerns should be voiced and we can modify this in any way you want, we can eliminate it, we can do whatever your, whatever your group would decide.
Kim? Mayor?
Would you be willing to, and I know you kind of already did, would you be willing to touch on a few high points of this, again, and in such a way that the media can pick up on it and share it with people? You know, if particularly the ones, okay, this question right here, should we go there or there? And now how about this question right here, should we go there or there? Those that are a little bit, a gray area with, which needs some interpretation, that would be nice, if you would be able to do that.
That's a mouthful.
Well, I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about, but, but the, you know, there's, there's concerns over the use of an ATV on the streets in the city of East Grand Forks. Typically, what we've done is we've allowed ATV usages by permit, by commercial individuals for, if they're going to snow removal or yard care, those types of things. There hasn't been any type of a license to provide, we'll say, ATV use for any other, any other purpose. What this would do, if we decided to enact an ordinance, would control ATV uses on the streets. Right now, without an ordinance, Minnesota statute does not allow any type of an ATV, golf cart, utility task vehicle, and in this case, because it's lumped together in the same format, mini trucks on the street. So the city council, by virtue of not having any type of an ordinance, prevents any type of these special use vehicles from being used in the city on the street. I do know that there was discussions between, for a utility task vehicle, which is different than an ATV, it's essentially your four-by-four side-by-sides, which seem to be a little bit sturdier. However, they're all lumped together by statute under special use vehicles. And, and so, right now, we're seeing in the city at different times, ATVs on the road, golf carts on the road, UTVs on the road, and I hope I'm answering your question, but we need to make some type of a decision if we want any, all, or none of them to be used on the road. And I haven't done it, but I do understand, okay, if we're going to look at golf carts, you know, I didn't put it in here, but there would be the potential to put some type of an exemption if you lived on the golf course, you know, so you could store it and then have it at the golf course, but the way it is right now, I don't know about you, but I see golf carts all, all over town, you know, and some of them are actually even being used on the point to go over the pedestrian bridge to get over to Lincoln Golf Cars, you know, so those are the types of things that we're trying to regulate and make a decision on whether or not this body in the city wants to have control over that.
I could just, one thing, and this came from one of the emails from a resident, as much as possible, if we could avoid kind of a redundant licensing at the city level, I think that would be desirable, right? So your, your UTV or ATV already has a state license, and we're going to require a city license already on top of that. If we can avoid that, I think it is preferable, it starts, you know, weird stuff piling up. Now, there may be like a golf cart, maybe there is no way to license that at a state level. Can they be licensed, a golf cart?
Golf carts aren't licensed at all. They're not street legal. And most of these things don't have, and I, and I don't want this to be confused as a license, we're allowing a permit.
Correct.
And so we're not actually licensing a licensed vehicle, we're actually permitting a vehicle that's probably not street legal or have the ability to be a licensed vehicle on this, on the city streets.
When you use the word permitting, are you using it as if to say we're allowing it, or we're issuing a permit?
Well, you're going to have to issue a permit to make sure that it satisfies the requirements of our statute, to make sure that they're, that they're safe, that the, they're insured, those types of additional requirements that you would have to have to even be on the road.
Thank you.
Mark?
There would be a fee attached to that permit to cover the cost of staff or the police department in order to check those out, I'm assuming.
That would be up to this group, if you, if you notice, I have not put a permit fee for anything in here that's determined by this group, and you'll have to understand or look at what the cost to, to administer the program would be and have that fee.
If someone would be willing to check what other cities around us do as to a fee or no fee, that'd be good to know.
I guess the first thing that maybe we need to look at originally is, are we going to look at, you know, you got your first page there, under A1, you know, you have golf cart utility, utility task vehicle, all-train vehicle, mini truck. I mean, are we even going to look at all these, or should we say, okay, we're not going to allow this, this, and this, so we're just talking about one?
That's entirely up to the group.
And that's what I'm asking.
I think that'd be a good way to start.
Because then you can get rid of a lot of questions and a lot of scenarios that you're going to be looking at. If we're only going to be looking at UTVs, or if we're only going to be looking at ATVs, I mean, I think that's.
Is that Toolcat a UTV? Where does that fit?
Is that?
Toolcat, where would that fit?
A Toolcat is, I guess I'd have to look at what that is, but it's probably going to be a UTV.
Yep. Because it would be, it says here, a side-by-side four-wheel-drive off-road vehicle that has four wheels propelled by an internal combustion engine. So I think, I think our Toolcats. I guess that, I would too. So I guess that would be my first question for everyone is, so are we just looking at UTVs, or are we looking at everything else?
Well, I'd like to.
Because that's what originally came up, was UTVs, right? Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to answer just as simple as we could, and the UTVs, ATVs, anything that's going to be on the road should have anchors, brake lights, blah, 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 and, and the only other issue I had with Mr. Gulf's thing here was the, how's anybody going to get from Grand Forks to East Grand Forks? They're, you know, they can't go on Demers Avenue, they can't go on Kennedy, I mean, we're restricting it from both sides of the river. You follow me? What, the only way they could get over here would do the point there, but then how would they get, because there would be nothing on 2 and 220.
Well, 2 and 220 are prohibited based on state.
Like, then what about Demers of the sorve?
That's state.
I mean, how would you, you know, they're okay in Grand Forks, but we're going to do this.
My understanding, Demers Avenue is also state, right?
Yes.
We sure can't allow them on the, on the pedestrian trail system, we sure can't do that anywhere. That would be a breach.
And to your point, Mr.
My point is that what we're doing here is just drinking our talent, North Dakota won't be able to come in.
Yeah, no, and what I was saying is, is to your point, you can designate streets, I've kind of taken what we've had for the special use vehicle, or I mean, use vehicle where somebody that has a disability that can come in and apply, these were the restrictions that we had on that type of vehicle, I inserted them, but that could also be changed. But to answer your question, I have no idea.
Anything else, sir?
Demers Avenue and, you know, some of those roads are all like 25, 30 mile an hour roads. 2 and 220, I'm absolutely in favor of not letting them cross there, because that's dangerous for anybody or anything. 220 north, it gets pretty, it goes pretty fast out there, I'm kind of in favor of that one too, but I would, I would like to see maybe Demers Avenue and, and, you know, probably not Gateway Drive either, because that's Highway 2 you're referring to correctly.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But as Mr. Johnson said, I think Demers Avenue is one we should look at. And real quick, as long as I'm speaking here, you talk about golf carts, if you go to Leisure Land, look at the new golf carts they got, they're all making them street legal now. They all got lights, they got everything on them. The only thing about a golf cart in my eyes is, a golf cart is not bought in to drive on the street, it's bought in to drive on a golf cart. So I don't see why we should include a golf cart into, golf cart into this thing unless you want to have some kind of exemption, where they're just going from their house to the. to the, to the golf course. But if they're, if you're doing that, then you're coming all the way from out on the point, though, you know, you're kind of defeating that. So, I, I think, I would agree that, I don't think we need to really be looking at the, at golf carts. I think it's, as you said, the UTVs and, and the other point I would like to make too is that, in this contract, I think it states that it's, they can only be used during the summer months, or certain months.
Yeah, about six months, May 1st to October.
Six months, and, and there again, I, I just don't see that year-round, because they're all made to go year-round, so I'd like to see that changed to year-round.
Anything else, Mr. Elms?
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I don't have any problem with any of the included vehicles in 7401, 7402. I'm, I'm assuming that's like a Segway? Is that...
That, that doesn't, that has, in here, that would be under a different, Segways are under...
That's a 7402, I think, right?
What's that?
That's a, that's like the...
That's under motorized foot scooters and, and those types of things?
Well, it's electric personal assistance mobility devices is what it, I don't know if we need to allow that, but I would...
Well, the only reason I put it in there is because you wanted it as most inclusive as possible so that we're not changing in the future when these become more accessible.
I would say there's fewer Segways were a thing probably 10 years ago, and now they're, I don't know. On the 7403, I, I think it is important though that we, that we are including that motorized foot scooters and how we're going to do with those. I think you're going to see more of that. I would include a definition of motorized skateboard, because I think you're going to see a lot of people using that same, it's different than the motorized foot scooter, or you could just have your...
And I don't think that they're motorized, if you look at...
Well, it says handlebars, so it, it wouldn't be a motorized skateboard. So, I would just either have it inclusive or add an additional definition. One of the questions I have is Officer Lampy in Grand Forks mentioned that it would be, he thought it would be a good idea for us to overlap or have a consistent code from Grand Forks to East Grand Forks. How much of this ordinance mirrors what they're doing in Grand Forks versus what we're doing?
Didn't look at Grand Forks.
Okay. We should, I don't know, I don't know if we want to pull up theirs, and I know we got it at one time, but maybe just cross-reference to see what things are difference in there from a, I am, I am worried about enforcement of this. I just think we should not only, when we factor what the administration of the permitting process is going to cost, I think we should factor in some training time and other thing that we're going to expect our officers to be out and, and be aware of all these things. In the, in the ordinance, it talks about the Minnesota requirements for insurance.
Yep.
Is that, is that like a liability insurance, do you know, or is that, or is it just?
It would be a...
A personal property, like a...
I, I haven't checked into that. I do know that it's, that was taken right directly out of the statute.
Okay.
Minnesota statute provides that if you are operating, we'll say, a UTV and you can't get insurance through your insurance provider, they would actually have insurance through the, the state that you could get on that. I would assume that it would also have some type of collision, but I can't tell you that.
Okay. And then, the only other thing I thought about was, would it be a benefit, especially from administrative side and also from a users, or usage side, is to have it like a three-year permit process? I think boats are three years, aren't they, or how long is a boat?
I think boats are three...
That's a license though, right? I mean, but I think you could do it like a three-year permit or something like that so you don't have to have everybody in here every year trying to register their device or their unit. Thank you.
Grassil?
So, I need to go back to 7401. Let's go back to, what vehicles are we going to, before we keep going back into, so golf carts, I would say, are out because 95% of them don't have a seatbelt in them. And if we're going to put them on them, I, I just can't see that. Utility task vehicle.
Mr. Grassil?
Yes.
There's no legal requirement that you have to have a seatbelt? It's just that if there is a seatbelt, they need to wear one.
Okay. So, utility task vehicle. Give me an example of what that would be.
That is all of your...
Side-by-sides, basically.
So, those are the ones that have doors, windows?
Uh, they don't necessarily have to have...
But they have to have enclosures, right?
It'd be like that.
No.
They're like yours, yep.
Like a roll cage, they wouldn't have to be closed up.
They would be almost any one of your Rangers from the top of the line to the bottom of the line. Some of them have doors and windows that are attached as accessories.
So, if we're going to allow those on our streets, then they're going to have, I, I would say they have to have enclosures to keep people inside and windows. To me, that would make the logical sense. Otherwise, this is going to be open sesame on all kinds of different things. And, I mean, you could have people with, I, I just don't like the fact that you could be driving around at 30 miles an hour and on streets. That, I just, I just don't think it's safe. I also don't want to say that I can't tell somebody that's going to go buy a $25,000 side-by-side that they can't drive around, because I'm not going to make that decision for them to, if they get hit by a vehicle, it's not going to be good, but that's not my decision to tell Mike, "You can't go out and get hit by a car." You know, I mean, that's his decision.
Just don't suggest it.
Mine. You know, I mean, I just don't like, that's the part that I don't like about it. I don't know if anybody else is thinking like that, or...
I guess the, the only comment that I would make about that is, is the state has already made it a, the decision for you. If you don't have an ordinance as it says they can, then they can't. So, by virtue of us putting an ordinance in place that says an ATV of some type or a UTV of some type can be on the street, you are making that decision for somebody. So, you either do or you don't. If you don't have an ordinance, they're not allowed at all.
Anything else, Mr. Grassil?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, the comment I wanted to add with Chad was that, like a motorcycle, you've got to have eye protection, whatever.
Right.
These smaller Jeeps, like the Military X Jeeps, what, they've got windshields that flap down, they're open, you know, they don't have enclosures, this and that, they're licensed by the state.
Right.
They're okay. Why can't the UTVs be okay that way? We don't have to restrict that. You know, they've got to have proper, the mayor even had a comment on the thing where proper...
Eye protection.
Eye protection. But, you know, I mean, we'll get into that after we okay the UTVs, ATVs, linkers, insurance, capable of doing the speed limit. I think it's a go.
Mayor?
Yep, I was going to make the same comparison to like a motorcycle, for example, and there you're just perched on the bike and you ride, and this would actually, if you, if it was open with a roll cage, it'd be safer than a bike, probably.
Still back to my original question. We tried to answer it for you. Well, I think it's been mixed of what we want allowed and not allowed. So, I mean, I guess if we don't get to that point of what we're going to move forward with, we can't give directions, Mr. Galstead, of what he needs to put together.
We could certainly go in steps and see...
I think that's the first step, is that we're going to allow all these...
So far, I've been making, I've been making a track of this. I've got two noes for golf carts, but that's what I've got tallied so far.
But what if you just open it up to a UTV with certain parameters and start there? And see how that rolls? And are people being safe? Are they being sensible? And then, six months a year?
That's what I mean. If, if we, if we come to consensus, okay, we're just going to move forward with UTVs, so let's strictly just talk about UTVs in this ordinance. Because then you don't talk about everything else, the mini trucks or anything else, or if you want to talk about, you know, it's just in 74.01, so I'm talking about. Nothing else.
And if, if we're silent on ATVs, I did get an email from a resident that I've known forever, and she said, "Are you trying to outlaw a kindly neighbor with an ATV coming down and pushing snow down the street of maybe older people that need the help? Are you turning them into criminals now and I got to maybe hire a lawn care service to move snow?" And the answer for me is, no. No, we're not, that, that would be a bad outcome. Some way, we got to still let that happen.
I would imagine we don't write many citations for that.
Right.
Currently.
So, is everybody, I know there's been...
I can live with the ATV piece.
UTVs?
UTVs, excuse me.
UTVs, starting at the UTVs and just concentrating on that? Is everybody fine with that?
Fine with that.
Okay. Where do we go from there?
Well, I think if that's the case, I don't, well, I don't want to speak for Ron, but I mean, that, that does help limit some of what the, the rest of this goes applies.
And this is only pertaining to 74.01, and then we have 74.02 and 03, and then are we in 04?
Well...
I know some of that will come out of the other ones, but, but then you go into, are we looking at...
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah. Because the 74.02 is like the...
Segways.
Segways, and the 74.03 are those, the ones you kind of like stand on, and Reed can tell you all about them.
Mr. Elms?
I think Mr. Galstead done probably exactly what we asked him to do here, just, it's, like you were just saying, I got a little bit carried away. I think what I'd like to see done is, I'd like to see him get the ordinance that Grand Forks has, and then maybe just kind of, as Mr. Demers says, mirror to that a little bit, and then bring it back and, and let's see what we got, because there's a lot of mumble jumble stuff in here that I, I don't understand, and honestly, I don't know, I don't see the chief of police here, and I, I don't know how many policemen out there is going to be able to cipher all this stuff out there either. So, I think if we just maybe had him do that and bring it back to us, we're not ready to move it on to the council by no means to approve anything, in my book, so I think if we could have him to do that way.
And maybe if we, my understanding that currently they allow the UTVs and whatever it is, and, but they do not allow ATVs.
Yeah, they're just UTVs according to his letter.
Right.
And then, we need to have it written up to us, especially say that they are not allowed on the greenway. We've got to make sure that that's in there. And if we're caught on the greenway, you're going to lose your machine or something. We've got to have a strict penalty for that. I mean, seriously.
Hey, be careful with that.
No, I'm going to say, but...
Goes to the mayor.
We got to do something to...
Your permit anyway.
Yeah. Got to do something to make sure that they're not down there and that's...
And that's worth for trial.
And that's probably where this six-month trial thing would come in. If we see a lot of that going on, then we just say, "No, we're not doing it," so.
I think allowing, and also, Mr. Murphy of getting the list of fees that have been charged, I think that's something that we need to bring in there.
I think we could deal with muffler systems and all that stuff after we decide what we want to do, because some of them are quite loud.
Mayor, then I'll go to Mr. Demers.
Oh, so, to dovetail into what you said, Dale, as to mirroring Grand Forks, and it sounds like they already are more toward UTVs, so the direction we can give Ron is kind of mirror the Grand Forks ordinance and with a special focus on UTVs, is the consensus of this group?
Well, I don't know if it has to mirror, I just want to know what the differences are. Before we just adopt what they want to do, I want to know...
I'm sure their statutes, state statutes are different anyways.
Right, but I just...
Before we just say, just mirror it and...
Not saying we copy and paste, but we are consistent with it as much as we can be.
Mike, would you like to say anything, sir? Could allow the opportunity if you want to say anything, because I did. I mean, everybody knows in the room that you drive one.
I feel you're on the wrong right track. I got hold of Grand Forks ordinance several years ago. It's not even half as much as this. And as I look through it, there's one point here on 5B that the applicant must submit a certificate signed by a physician that he is capable to operate a UTV. I don't have to do that to get a license from the state.
That's if you don't have a driver's license, and for some reason, you don't have a driver's license and you want to be able to use a...
You shouldn't be driving.
You use a UTV and some, well, there's some...
Yeah.
We'll just leave it at that. But, but there, there's, there's people that might have a disability that, that aren't allowed to drive, but they're allowed to drive one of these vehicles with a doctor's permit and certificate that says they can, and then they would have to pass at least a, a driving test, so to speak, from the, to make, by the chief of police to make sure that they're capable of operating it? That's what that's for.
One other thing, so the Central Avenue and Demers Avenue prohibition, I have trouble with that, because like, one time last summer, I was here for a meeting, and I wanted to run over to Hardware Hank after the meeting, so I went down two blocks of Central Avenue. I personally do not go down Gateway Drive anytime. And if I got to go to the bank, I do a loop around like you guys were talking about tonight when you're going home. I stay off the busy roads. I mean, it's common sense, but Central, like over here, that's pretty harmless.
But I think something we can look at, let me get to that point.
I had a comment on the timeframe, sunrise to sunset. I have more lights on my ATV than I do with my... It's lit up like a barn dance, and I don't have any problem seeing, believe me. But that's, that's a technical that you can iron out later. By and large, I'm happy. At least we're talking about it.
Mike Powers is happy, real good.
Mr. Demers?
If we're just going to look at 7401 and 7404, I would like to just keep those other two as placeholders in the ordinance, you know, for future, or maybe add a few or figure out how we're going to further subdivide those. And at some point in, maybe before spring or, or before summer, I mean, we should probably look at 7403, because I think it's, it's primarily a, you know, a regulatory, it doesn't have anything to do with permitting or anything, but we're going to be dealing with more and more of those type of personal vehicles, if you want to call them, and having some rules set up before we deal with it is probably a good idea. So, I think we should address it. Maybe if you don't want to address it in conjunction with this, maybe parallel to it.
I don't have a problem with that. Mr. Vetter?
Thank you. Mr. Galstead, the prohibition from riding on Central Avenue, Demers, Gateway and so forth, that's because they're state highways and we don't have jurisdiction over them, and the state says they're prohibited from riding on there?
State highways don't allow any ATVs on them, they're only allowed on the opposite side of the shoulder from the ditch.
Okay, so, it's going to be a real limited, anyone out on the point until we get our 32nd Avenue Bridge is going to be limited to the point, because they can't get across Central or Business Highway Two.
You can cross it.
You just can't drive down them.
Operator of motorized golf cart utility vehicle may cross any street or highway intersection designated or day, except all vehicles are prohibited.
If you look at six.
I'm going to look in under 10 and six. I, the way I read it is, they can't cross any of those then.
So, they're, are they considered state highway, or is it considered state aid? You mean Central Avenue is...
It's Minnesota Highway 220?
Part of it.
Although, we'll have to double-check, but typically, any, any state highway...
From two going north.
Yeah, I just think there's more.
We'll have to look at that, because like I say, if that's the case, you can't cross those even, then anyone on the point isn't going to be able to get in here.
Then they're going to use that walk bridge on the north end.
Yep.
Or on the south end.
And the, on the, even on the north end, you can't get across 220, so you can get downtown with them, so the north end people would be all right, unless you're on the Civic Center side, and then you can't get anywhere.
I think it says, "Except to cross at designated intersections." So, we can designate an intersection off on 220, like 17th, they can cut across or go across it.
And that's just talking about 2 and 220.
And realistically, the, the primary one that we're saying you can't go in is 2 and 220.
Right. But you couldn't be on that. I guess you could be on Central or Demers, I guess, coming into, well, you couldn't even be on that, so you couldn't be on those to cross them anyway.
I'll double-check on that, on the state, but I know the state... I'll double-check on that, on the state, but I know the state highways...
Okay, does anybody else have anything right now, direction? I think Mr. Golstead, are you satisfied with what you've been given direction on and what you need to look at and bring back?
If I have any questions, I'll be sure to ask you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Appreciate everybody's input on this. First thing, Mr. Murphy, who wants to go over something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, since we have you all here and, you know, we have to go through this in open session, as you're aware, tomorrow we have that joint meeting with the city council with Grand Forks. Just wanted to let you be aware that we are hearing that it has been gathering some steam amongst the public over there in Grand Forks, and they are anticipating a, potentially a full house there. The mayor from Grand Forks is going to try to meet with our mayor here prior to the meeting. He'll be jointly in control of it, and they're going to try to establish the rules to make sure that it does not become unproductive.
And leave early to get there.
Okay. So just wanted to be aware that it could be a full house tomorrow night.
Good, thanks, sir. Mayor, flood update, sir?
I want to thank Chief Larson, Mr. Stordahl for the timely updates, and we have opportunity to meet and email several times a day, which I appreciate. I know right now and last night when we met, they're so proud of the people working on putting up the segments of the invisible flood wall. It's going faster than it's ever gone, and the work is going with high quality, and they're comfortable, so they're able to move on to the next and the next. Probably some of you know already that we ended up with water on the Point Bridge today, and so the Point Bridge now is closed, on the Point Bridge approach. And so the Point Bridge is closed, we're down to the Kennedy, and maybe if you want to go around to the Mallory. We're headed for a crest, still, they haven't changed the number in that 48 feet range, probably around Friday. But if you look at the plot, it'll hang there for probably close to a week and then slowly drop. So please know, when Saturday comes, we don't start to get these closures opened up again. Plan for one to two weeks of inconvenience, which is a minor inconvenience compared to three weeks at the favorite resort in the Bemidji area with an evacuation. So we're pretty good shape that way.
Depends on how you look at it.
Yeah. I love those folks, they were so good to my family, so I didn't mean any disrespect there. To some who like to maybe snicker at our city employees who set, let's say, an invisible flood wall that never gets water within four or five feet of it on the vertical, you might say, "There are my tax dollars building a flood wall that wasn't ever gonna get wet." Please know, there are two or three closures that will not get wet this year, Lord willing, based upon flood predictions, that will be put in place. The guys are smart, they give customer service. They're gonna try to come in after the morning rush around 9 o'clock, assemble these flood wall segments, and they'll be certified. They have to be certified every five years. So the entire system will be built to some height this year, and you will see a few closures going in that water will be nowhere near them just for the purpose of certification. The hope again would be to disassemble those before the evening rush. So please do not snicker at the inept city workers. There's a method to their madness. They're actually high-quality folks doing really, really good work. So we still have a crest prediction of 48 feet. It's coming up at about the rate that it looked like for a while. It was coming up quicker, then it leveled off, and now it's kind of following the projection. You're seeing closures going up all over the place, and that's just exactly according to schedule. And am I missing anything?
I don't think so.
Okay. Excellent. So again, thanks for the good work, guys, and thanks for keeping me in the loop.
All right, thank you, sir. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move by Vetter, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.